Good evening. Thank all of you for being here tonight. Today is January the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, it's our first meeting of the year. Happy New Year to all of you. Our thought for today is a positive mind finds opportunity in everything, a negative mind finds fault in everything. That's Arthur Unknown. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call the meeting to order tonight. Invocation, I think I'll do the invocation tonight and I'm gonna ask if Commissioner Cowan, if you would lead us in our pledge tonight. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for today, we thank you for another opportunity, Lord, to give you glory and give you praise and give you honor. Father, we pray now that if you would, rest rule in the body in this place. Father, allow us to handle your county business as you would see fit, God, and we pray that you bless everyone that's here, Lord, and their families. We ask you that, in your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. I seek a motion that we adopt the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions in regards to the agenda before we do the adoption of the agenda. Nine B, the ratification of the mental health resolution. Ratification meaning that we had commissioners that agreed to it, correct? So when it is ratified, is that published to the public on who actually agreed to the resolution? Which is a good thing, I'm just asking a question.
And yes, it will be.
Okay, thank you so much. Then I also wanna go to items sixteen, seventeen, eighteen that were formally on the agenda. And just to expound to the listening audience, our residents, on why I'm asking that question. The commissioners normally receive the agenda first before it actually is publicized. Item sixteen, seventeen, eighteen had the nomination of the county clerk, had the nomination of the county law firm, I would assume to be, and the county manager. I only asked the question in regards to the county manager because I know the previous board, well not the previous, last year, the board voted, well, it was this, yeah, last year. The board voted to have the county manager's contract for two years. Since I've been on the board, the county manager's contract has only been for one year. And so I was asking a question, is it supposed to be on the agenda? And so I was informed that this is something that we're supposed to do every year based on our county code. I never asked for it to be removed from the agenda because based on our enabling legislation, we're supposed to be not, uh, voting and appointing our county clerk, appointing our county attorney, and appointing our county manager. And I just wanted to know, why is it not on the agenda? I did ask that question and I was informed that that was a directive given by the county clerk to remove it from the agenda. So can someone inform me when we will vote on these items? Because you have to vote in public, it is illegal for us to vote behind the scenes and make a nomination. And I do have a question following that.
Patrick, first, no, let's clear up. First of all, the county clerk does not make up the agenda? Agenda is made up from the chairman's office, so.
No, that's not what I stated.
No, 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 you said that the county clerk.
No, in the email, if you read the email, Mr. Chairman, I asked the question.
You didn't email me.
Who, the email, I asked the question, who gave the directive to have those items removed? The response was, the county clerk told the deputy clerk to remove those items. That was the response in, on the agenda, the original agenda had those items on there. It was removed and I was asking who removed them? And that was, the answer was given to me.
Well, the agenda is approved by the chairman. Patrick, if you would, if you would, please explain the county code, please. Because it's been stated by Commissioner Sanders that we need to follow our process and our procedures, so can you please explain that, please?
I will, I sent an email to the board.
Upon receipt of the question about the county manager appointment, I looked in the county code, the county enabling legislation, and Georgia law. None of those require annual appointments of any of your county appointed staff, your manager, your clerk, or your attorney. Essentially, once appointed, they serve until removed or until someone else is appointed. So there's no legal requirement that you come in every year and make those appointments.
So the question would be, based on enable legislation, appointment for the county clerk, the appointment for the county manager, the appointment for the law firm is through the board of commissioners? So if there is a vote, how do the commissioners vote if it's not on the agenda to vote?
So, once appointed, and all of those positions were appointed last year by a vote.
Yes.
Once appointed, they remain in office until removed.
Okay.
Yeah, so you don't have to redo it, the way you would vote on it again is you would make a motion to appoint someone new.
Okay.
And, or to remove one of the positions.
So I would love for you to answer the question in regards to the appointments of the county clerk and the county attorney. How are those appointments and nominations made?
The same way the manager, once they're made.
Is that written in the able legislation? That you said the same way the manager. What I'm asking is, I think I might need to clarify.
Right.
In regards to the nomination, there is no announcement, there is no public search, that we are looking for a county clerk, that we are looking for either a county attorney, because that just expired. So how are those nominations made if there's nothing put out? If you're constantly allowing it to continue to go every year and it's never on the agenda, then how do people know that they can apply for that position?
Well, the board would, in those instances, the board would either give a directive to management to run a notice for those positions, like in the, in the employment, you know, employment opportunities section, or the board could vote to appoint somebody. I mean, it would require the board to give either a directive to the manager to publish available positions and accept applications, or the board could simply nominate somebody, vote on it.
Okay, yeah, because the able legislation does not have directives on how we appoint. So they can't go through the board of commissioners. And my last question is, when, when the board does make that nomination, does it require the re-commissioners to say that this person, they wanna nominate someone else for that position? Because that's not written anywhere.
So the way the board would vote on appointing a county clerk or a county attorney would be, just like the board votes on anything else. It would appear on an agenda, there would be a motion to appoint person X to the position and the board would vote on that person. Or, because your law is silent as to how to fill those positions, the board could establish some other protocol to do it. The board could say, we're gonna accept, you know, nomination for six months and we'll vote on each individual, you could, you could do it however you wanted.
I believe that needs to be established because there is no written documentation. I know in two thousand and sixteen that this board voted to go to an in-house attorney. We have not yet done that, it is now two thousand and twenty-four. And so there is no established ruling or procedures in regards to nomination. The taxpayers pay these salaries. So we're constantly allowing certain positions to go on and on and on, the taxpayers is not even aware that there should be a nomination or what's gonna occur. So we should have policies and procedures, is what I say all the time, standard operating procedures. If there's nothing written, then transparency falls by the wayside. Thank you.
Thank you. I seek a motion. Is it a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason? Any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, could somebody restate that, I guess, the motion?
All in favor? Pass is five oh, thank you. Next is citizens' comments, this opportunity we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so, if you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Have three minutes to do so, agenda topics only.
Mine pertains to alcohol, but it, alcohol is on the agenda, right? Thank you. Alcohol, Alfonso Henley, fifty-five, River Book Trail. Alcohol was invented, or established, or created in nineteen, or seven thousand B.C., nine thousand years ago. And around the tenth century, it was established as the most dangerous weapon on planet earth. It is actually today counted as a weapon of mass destruction, the most dangerous. Georgia used to be a dry county, a dry state in nineteen oh seven. It was the first dry state because alcohol was out of control. Insane asylums for deuterium, uh, thrimmons were established because of alcohol. I believe Georgia should go back to be a dry state, make a precedence, because alcohol is killing everybody. The Jews knew it because the Jews now own alcohol, every branch of it, everybody else just rents from it. Alcohol is killing us all, it's on every street in the nation, except for the Quakers, of course. Alcohol is killing us, I don't think we should have alcohol in this state, period. And that's what I have to say about alcohol. Thank you.
Anyone else, agenda topics only, agenda topics only. Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. We have some special guests with us tonight. Ministry and, Ministry in Action, Ms. Franklin, ma'am, if you would, please come up. As you know, we want to highlight some of the people who received ARPA funds. And we had an opportunity to go out and visit their location and we want to welcome Ms. Franklin, Pastor Franklin here tonight, and let her talk a little bit about the way she is utilizing her ARPA funds. Thank you for being here tonight. You are among family, so go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself.
The fund that they allocated to the ministry, we are food pantry, we help many, many, many families that is in need, family that is less fortunate, and children less fortunate to put food on their table. We have secured through Newton County funds, we have allocated over thirty-two thousand pounds of food into Newton County and served over seven hundred and fifty families with the funds that we was able to receive from you all. We also were able to secure proper coolers and proper commercial freezer and coolers with the fund that was given to the community that the food would not go to run when it come in into the community. We pick up once a month from down at the distribution center and the food help all the communities, so it's no help, everybody, anybody come, it's welcome to come. We open on Tuesdays from eleven to two, and also on Friday for eleven to two. And we thank Newton County for what all they have done to secure food for this Newton County. Thank you.
If you would, tell us your name and tell us a little bit about, I like to say the ministry, but tell us a little bit about your food pantry that you are, you're operating. Again, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Alan Hyde. Let me tell you a little bit about myself before I go into my food pantry. I am a twenty-five-year retired veteran, also retired from the government, government the second time with their Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Just retired last year, twenty-one years there. Also been in ministry for over thirty-some years. And I've just been serving people most of my life, doing stuff within, for people. I am not a resident of Newton County, but my food pantry is in Newton County. And I've been here since two thousand and fourteen, serving the county, the Newton County community. And again, I wanna thank you for the funds that you gave us. I have good news, all of it is gone. That's the good news I have, every penny that you gave me has been spent, it's been well spent. We have spent, let me, the breakdown that I have today to share with you of some of the breakdown of how we spent the money for advertisement. We spent close to six hundred dollars, we spent also about nine thousand plus dollars in food. We pick up from four different locations. I am the vice president of a food bank in McDonough. I'm also on the board of a food bank, which will have warehouses that we supply food to organization within the state of Georgia. That's in Hampton, Georgia. I also pick up in Peachtree City, which is Midwest Food Bank. And I pick up also in East Point, the Atlanta Community Food Bank. So I'm all over the area of picking up food and trying to provide for the community in Newton County. Due to that, the rising cost of fuel, we spent over twelve hundred dollars just in fuel costs, going to all those places. To talk a little bit about that, I was in Peachtree City this morning, I did that bad weather this morning to pick up food for my food pantry. Also, we was able to purchase refrigerators and freezer, top-of-the-line commercial refrigerator and a top-of-the-line commercial freezer made by True, which is an American-made company in the United States. We, the food that we purchased, we not only purchased from outside of the county, we also purchased within the county. We purchased food from local vendors within the county to put back some of the money back into the county. And we also was able to acquire a enclosed trailer, which allowed us to do mobile. And that, and that's something that we've been planning on doing and wanted to do for a long time, is to load up the trailer and go mobile to areas. So, during the last three or four months, we have done at least three mobile food distribution at Covington Crossing, which is a senior citizen complex. Because we know that a lot of times seniors can't get out, they don't have the transportation, so we decided to take it to them. And we allow people that, and it's still open to anybody in the county that is living in the county. If we're mobile, anybody that shows up in the county, they're allowed to receive food. We're open every Thursday from twelve to three. We're open on second and fourth Saturday from nine to one. Because if you know anything about Atlanta Food Bank, they require you to be open at least twenty hours a month. And you had to do at least thirty people. We went from doing total of ninety families to a hundred and eighty families that show up for the month of each month. So, and we strictly keep it to Newton County because we are limited on our supplies and what we have. So we, we just keep it strictly to the Newton County community. And again, I really thank you guys for allowing, giving us the funds. Because if we have went a long way, we have outgrown, we're located at eleven-twenty Crowell Road, which is the Potter's House Church. The Two Heaven Hand Food Pantry is a separate identity from the church. I go to church there, but it is totally separate and we, we are limited on space. So we have another big problem, we need more space. Because we have outgrown the space that we are in now, we just need more space. So if you have space, if you know where I can get space, and I like the word free. There's something about that word free that, 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 it's on my sign, when you come up and see my sign, it says free food. So, we don't charge anybody for anything, everything is totally free. I'm able to get additional food from the places that I'm on the board at. It's just a, it's a blessing that we're able to help so many in the community. Not only we just do food, but there's other items that we receive also from the Atlanta Food Bank, like towels and all different types of items, uh, home, uh, home tools and different types of supplies that we receive that we are able to help people out. We also partner with Newton High School. We've been working with them, they have sent volunteers over, students to volunteer to help with the food pantry. And we also partner with Porta their elementary school, that we supply them also with items. And that's all, because if you let me continue to talk, I won't, I won't stop.
I was about to tell you, sir, we greatly appreciate you and all that you're doing to help in the community. You as well as Ministry in Action, thank you guys for what you're doing in the community. This board is excited to see with the funding that they're giving out, see what their people are doing with the funding. So, thank you for blessing the community, and again, thank you so much for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. And I, and I guess this is to our county manager. A while back, I had requested a list of, of a different church and stuff that, that we had given money to, so that we could kinda make sure they was out in the public, for the people to know that maybe, I think one, one young lady said that, first and.
He got a report coming up, can I finish the chairman's report right quick? Thank you, sir.
It was something I really wanted to know, and, and last, be quick, Mr. Chairman, could you supply me that list that I asked for about three or four months ago, please?
Again, he has a report that's coming up in a few seconds. Also, guys, in the chairman's report, I don't know how many years ago it was done, but it was done throughout the county, the local government. I think Commissioner Henderson was on board, I think I seen his name over here on this, on this proclamation. We did something with water to make sure that Newton County receive every opportunity to get grants and things like that, discount, better interest rates with water. So, what we did, we partnered through, well, I wasn't here then, but what they did, they partnered throughout the community, the different municipalities, the school board, I think the Chamber of Commerce, and they signed this proclamation over here, you see to the right, to ensure that when they apply for different things, funding and stuff like that, that they can say that the county, this community, support them. Well, as you know, Newton County Educational Foundation is kicking off again. And we want to do the same thing for that organization, to let them know that we support them. And we wanna put a proclamation in place that the county would sign, the commissioners, the city councils throughout the community will sign. I think the Chamber of Commerce and, I think Newton County tomorrow, and it's one more, it's more, it's one more entity that will sign that proclamation as well. But I do want to let the board know about it, that we wanted to bring that to you guys. I think it's the first meeting in February, we want to get it so everybody could sign it. And we'll go to the different councils meetings and present that proclamation to the different city councils as well. Did wanna bring that to you guys' attention. I know everybody supports the Educational Foundation here, we have a new superintendent that is, he's off to the ground running, who's really pushing this, this foundation. And we have, I think, they brought, they brought in a new director, Ms. Gail, who's really pushing education here in our community. So, just wanna bring that to your, you guys' attention. And also next, and I don't know how long ago they started this, but I think Commissioner Henderson was here as well. I think Chairman Verner, Aaron Verner might have helped start it this, the King Day Celebration. I wanna ask you guys if, if you would help fund that celebration, the King Day Celebration, where they do, they give away, they give away a scholarship, they acknowledge different people in the community who's been doing work in the community. I know they have reached out several times to ask for support. And I wanted to ask this board, if you don't mind, would you guys support that organization? Can we as a county support that organization? I would like to, they didn't ask for this amount, but I would love it if we can get them a donation of five thousand dollars to help keep that King Day Celebration going. And I will, if you have any questions, I try my best to answer them. Commissioner Henderson.
Well, first of all, thank you, I think, it was a, a couple people called me over the weekend, and asked me, said, well, what happened to the, to the King Day Celebration? And I said, I don't know, I said, we normally, we used to fund it around ten thousand dollars a year to help them with their celebration. And, and if they didn't use all of the money, they would take and then use it for the next year. And so, but I said, you know, time may be a little different, whereas if the people who came up from the churches and told us about what they spent the money on, that it was gives a list, because we're not, we, in the organization, we should, we need to know if we spend taxpayers' dollars as far as how it's spent and what it's spent on. So, I would like to, if there are no objection, I'd like to give them ten thousand dollars, because I think there's something good in honoring people who have worked hard in, in our community, whether black or white, to receive that award, maybe once a year and give out scholarships to our kids.
Let's do this, let's do it like this, can you make a motion to amend the agenda, please, to add it to the agenda? And I'll do that.
I'd like to make a motion to add it to the agenda, talk about the funding of the King Celebration. But I did want to let the board know about it, that we wanted to bring that to you guys. I think it's the first meeting in, uh, February, we want to, um, get it so everybody could sign it. And we'll go to the different councils meetings and present that proclamation to the different city councils as well. Did want to bring that to you guys' attention. I know everybody support the Educational Foundation here. Um, we have a new superintendent that is, um, he, he's off to the ground running, who's really pushing this, um, this foundation. And we have, I think this, they bring, they brought in a new director, uh, Ms. Gail, who's really pushing education here in our community, so just want to bring that to your, you guys' attention. And also next, um, and I don't know how long ago they started this, but I think Commissioner Henderson was here as well. I think, um, um, Chairman, um, Verner, Aaron Verner might have helped started this. The King Day Celebration. Um, I want to ask you guys if, if you would help fund that celebration, the King Day Celebration, where they do, um, they give away sc- they give away a scholarship, they are, uh, knowledge, different people in the community who's been, um, doing work in the community. Um, I know they have reached out several times to ask for support. And I wanted to ask this board, if you don't mind, would you guys support that organization? Can we as accounting support that, that organization? Um, I would like to, um, they didn't ask for this amount, but, um, I would love it if we can get them a donation of five thousand dollars to help keep that King Day Celebration going. And I will, if you have any questions, I try my best to answer them. Commissioner Henderson.
Well, first of all, thank you, I think, um, it was a couple, people called me, uh, over the weekend, and they asked me, said, well, what happened to the, to the King Day Celebration? And I said, I don't know, I said, we normally, we, we used to fund it around ten thousand dollars a year to help them with their celebration. And, and if they didn't use all of the money, they would take and then use it for the next year. And so, but I said, you know, time may be a little different, whereas if the people who came up from the churches and told us about what they spent the money on, that it was gives a list, cause we're not, uh, we, on any organization, we should, we need to know if we spend taxpayers' dollars as far as how I spent and what I spent on. So I would like to, um, if there's no objection, I'd like to give them ten thousand dollars. Cause I think there's something good in honoring people who have worked hard in, in our community, whether black or white, to receive that award, um, maybe once a year and give out scholarships to our kids.
Hey, can, let me, let's, let's, let's do this, let's do it like this. Can you make a motion to amend the agenda, please, to add it to the agenda? And I'll do that.
I'd like to make a motion to add it to the agenda, talk about the, um, funding of the King Celebration.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason, um, that we amend the agenda at the King Day Celebr- funding of the King Day Celebration. Um, is it in the discussion? All in favor? It passes, five oh. We're gonna make that, we're gonna do it now, we just do it now, so we'll have to get back to it. Uh, Commissioner, can you make that motion now?
Well, I just want to say something before I make the motion. Um, the King Celebration, you know, when I was smaller and a real small child back in the sixties, that was one of the highlights of my life, when I could look on the, the black screen T V and see a man of, um, Martin Luther King statue. And then I learned that he had some, later on, that he had kids and stuff, who, who at this point in date lead, uh, the King Center. And it made me proud. It made me think that it were gonna get better than from the, um, the books that we used over Washington Street, which had most of the stuff torn out of it that we had to use and go to school with. That things was better and he, he sold us, and that's what we should do today, is we sit, is we can sell our kids on a dream. And the dream is that if you go to school, you get a good education, stay out of trouble, do what's right, and we, and you can have that same dream that, which is the American dream, to have a good job, uh, maybe be a chairman or county commissioner somewhere, you know, in this county, in this country. And that sold, that was sold me on it. And that's why I'm here today. I used to be the youngest thing on the board, now I'm the oldest thing on the board. And so, Mr. Chairman, having said all that, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, give, uh, ten thousand dollars to King Celebration to help fund that program for our, for our community.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, um, just so our ducks should have rolled, what organization, the, the, the organization we're gonna be moving this ten thousand dollars to, if, if it passes, i- is, is meets our criteria of, you know, the past criteria we've discussed in, in this board, I don't know what that criteria is, but it, they do meet that criteria, correct?
Them, they, they are a non-pro- you know, I need to make sure, we'll make sure that they are nonprofit before we, we, we do that. We'll make sure that they meet the, um, obligations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But I do want to say this, I want to make sure everybody know, um, that they did not ask for a, a dollar amount. They just wanted to make sure that we knew that, um, the past chairman, several years ago, and I think, again, I think Commissioner Henderson was on the board then, when they put this in place, uh, did start this, this, um, King Day Celebration. And they would like, they would love for the Board of Commissioners to be a part of it and support it again. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Well, I just, I just want to piggyback on what you said, and not only did the, uh, I think past year, Roy Verner, I think, excuse me, who started the, the King Day Celebration, and every commission since then unanimously approve that program in the community every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cowan.
Six eight.
Six eight. Yep, I'm sorry, six eight. Six eight, you, you got that, Madam Court? All right, thank you. All in favor? Thank you, it passes five oh. Thank you, next is the county manager, report.
Citizens, Happy New Year. Uh, I come before you today with the county manager's report. We are still subscribing to the three P doctrine, and today we're gonna talk about purpose and optimum service delivery. We're gonna talk specifically about SPOSS projects, twenty seventeen as well as twenty twenty-three. And to, and with the twenty seventeen projects, we're gonna talk about the eleven projects. Just a brief overview of what SPOSS entails. The voters of Newton County approves a special purpose local option sales tax. And that ballot has been, uh, an initiative over the years. And typically, these projects are identified before going before the voters with both the county and the various cities, cities within Newton to share in the improvements. These, the projects are then discussed with the citizens so that buy-in could be real and so that we can move forward with said projects. There are eight projects of the twenty seventeen SPOSS that have been completed thus far, and they are as follows. Josephine Brown Senior Center Expansion, many of you attended the seventeen, September fourteenth gala. It was a great experience from what I heard. Updates to the Recreation Center at Turner Lake, Chimney Park improvements, Library improvements, updates to our animal control facility, improvements to Washington Street's facility, upgrades to the sheriff's office and updates, up, dates, excuse me, to the various fire stations. Active projects that are still ongoing right now, the Spring Hill Park project, the Yellow River Trail project, and the Westside Youth Facility. Anytime you're building any type of park project, there are gonna be four tenants in terms of the foundation. And those four tenants are, you're gonna have park amenities, right? You want to see the beautification of those parks. You're gonna have a standard restroom building, you're gonna have a pavilion, and you're gonna have a community building. And that's what we're having at the Spring Hill Park. And these two illustrations show when, uh, this project was taken on at its inception and what the proposed project will look like once completed. Here, we're looking at the, uh, masonry units of the project. Uh, the construction began in April of twenty twenty-two. Uh, the roadway, curb, gutters, and binder installations are completed. Uh, stormwater piping and domestic water utilities are completed. Building foundations and slabs are completed. And the CMU walls are seventy-five percent completed at this time. So our expected completion date, and we're cautiously optimistic because we know things happen, uh, it's spring of twenty twenty-four. The Yellow Tri- uh, Yellow River Trail, uh, project, uh, it began in June of twenty twenty-two. Currently in phase one, the land acquisition of Eastman's for segment one. Here you see an illustration of the North Master Plan as well as the South Master Plan. When we talk about segment one of this plan, portions of segment one will not move forward because, you know, there has to be, uh, some segment, uh, re-alignment to work with, uh, the developments that make up that area. But proposed phase one trail segment is to achieve the Eastman's in reference to, uh, moving forward. Westside Youth Facility, project began in June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, there's still, uh, discussions in reference to the location, and we want to keep in mind, this is a park that is needed, excuse me, this is a facility that is needed because the highest density areas in this community are comprised of District Two, Three, and Four. Let's talk about twenty twenty-three SPOSS and the updates associated with it. There are twenty-three projects for the twenty twenty-three SPOSS. And these projects are considered either a tier one project or a tier two project. The tier one projects are priority. Tier one projects are as follows, and they are, uh, seven projects here. General Government Fleet Replacement, we're in the procurement phase of that. Public Safety Fleet Replacement, we're in the encumbered status of that with Sheriff's Office as well as Fire Services. Countywide Park Improvements, Senior Services Enrichment Center, the location has been selected and the design phase is the step that we're in right now. The Westside Community Park, still in the property assessment phase. The Southside Park, in property assessment phase, and the Community Water Park, still waiting for some more, uh, discussions amongst the board. Tier two SPOSS, uh, SPOSS projects, pardon me. Administration, administration building reutilization is in this design phase. Uh, centralized storage and maintenance facility in design stage. Uh, the RL Cousins Community Center, it was brought to our attention, uh, just recently at our December fifth board meeting, uh, and we're moving forward with that project. Other tier two projects that are currently inactive at this time, but we will begin to, uh, initiate our, the Animal Service Expansion, Phase Two, the Nelson Heights Improvements, the Newton Trails, and the Washington Street Improvements. This concludes my county manager's report, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson, I had a question for you.
Thank you, in fact, if, if I, if I could have a couple of questions. Um, I was thinking during the SPOSS project, each commissioner, it was approved by the voters in Newton County, that each district had a million dollars, I mean, so I'm just kind of figuring out where did, from each district, where did the commission, I mean, where did the million dollars go? Because I want to have, um, see what I was thinking, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have a, a district meeting, and we're gonna discuss the million dollars that was, that the taxpayers given, gave the district for, and how, how we might want it spent in District Four. And secondly, I think you were saying some improvement of Nelson Light Community Center, which is in District Four. So I would like to know exactly what type of improvements might that be? Uh, because I am the district commissioner.
Okay, well, those improvements have not come to fruition yet because that project is yet to be bonded, right? It's a tier two project. So once we get to that stage, you will be engaged and be a part of it, sir. In terms of the one million dollar allotment, was that something that the board had agreed on previously?
It was put on place on the ballot, if I'm not mistaken, and it was approved by the voters in Newton County. So that it automatically be allocated to those districts. Come on.
That, there were, um, during the identification of projects for the SPOSS, each commissioner was, was essentially permitted to direct a million dollars of SPOSS funds towards projects. So you can look at the SPOSS project list and you'll see project-specific, uh, district-specific projects.
And Commissioner Henderson, did you not direct yours to Nelson Heights?
No, I did not, it was, the way I, you know, the way I do stuff in District, in District Four is that we have meetings with the, with the community, same as I suggested for, uh, our cousin, that we have meetings for the people tells what they want, that I never did. And most time, if, and if I did, and which I didn't, you, it would be some minutes to that effect. And there was something I was planning on having a meeting, and they, the citizens of District Four would tell me their district commissioner as far as how they would like their money to be spent in their district.
Community engagement, I like that.
Thanks, sir, um, Commissioner Sanders.
Quick question, I did speak with our county attorney beforehand in regards to the West Side Community Park. The, and only, I know I can only say certain things, but the property that, um, certain commissioners gave directive to our county attorney at appraisal, I was informed that that family pulled out, so we're back at square one in regards to land for the West Side Community Park. Hopefully, we'll go back to what the citizens actually voted for, where they wanted that park to be, and where they would like for that park to be placed. Because as you can see, District Three has no movement and no projects going. We have moved forward with other projects in twenty twenty-three, and the project from twenty seventeen from that current commissioner that was sitting here, that passed along to me, has not had any movement. So the residents in District Three, which is in a lot of our meetings, have said they are completely upset because there is no movement in a district that is most dense. And I pull the record on the impact fees, that pays the most impact fees, that has no movement for recreation and no renovations or anything occurring in that district, and that's unfair. So board, I do hope that it's not about me, it's about the residents of this community. I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter how you feel about me, that's minute. But it matters about the community. So any decisions you make, it's in regards to the residents of Newton County, not in regards to Elena Sanders, my daughter's in college. So it's very important that we move forward with the community and their initiatives because they voted for these things on the ballot. The money is sitting there, we have four million dollars, which is, an email just came out forward over to the county manager, that HUD, the government, is just waiting on us to do a, a location, it's free dollars. It doesn't matter who submitted it and who got it, it's free money to the taxpayers, four million dollars, that's sitting there waiting for a building to be built, it makes no sense. So if you can let me know when we're going to move forward with selecting locations so that the residents of Newton County who voted and those, that area that has the most dense paying the property taxes can see some movement in the, in the district.
Thank you, thank you, sir. You done with your report, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is the, um, consent agenda. Uh, we do have an appointment, Commissioner Stan Edwards would be the new vice chairman. Uh, thank you for your willingness to serve, sir. With that being said, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda. It's been motioned by Commissioner, uh, Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussions? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Next is item number ten. Um, consideration of proposed annexation, City of Covington, Mr. Jockstetter.
Dear permission chair, I'll, I'll present from here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, the county has received notice of an application to annex, uh, three point four acres of land located between Interstate twenty and the Old Atlanta Highway. It is north of Interstate twenty and south of the Old Atlanta Highway, just west of the Exit Ninety ramp. The property currently, um, the, the, the property is currently split in half with roughly three and a half acres of the property already in the city of Covington, the other three point four acres in the county that sought to be annexed. The property will be annexed, if, if it is annexed, the property will be put to use as an RV, uh, recreational vehicle lot, which is the use already on the half of the property within the city of Covington. The rec, the notice to us indicates that the property will be zoned into the industrial zoning classification, which is the city's zoning classification required for RV parking. I have discussed this with the owner's representative, and they have indicated that they are anticipating a zoning condition when the property is annexed to limit the use to RV parking, which is already on the other half of the parking, of the parcel. The reason for this is workers, um, Georgia Power and other electric company workers are call, are being called upon to come to Newton County to build the infrastructure needed for the new development coming in Rivian and, and, uh, I believe there's an Amazon facility, whatever the other big facilities are coming in. And this is where a lot of those workers will go live temporarily while the project is underway. While this property may qualify because there is a change in use for you to initiate the annexation objection, uh, protocol, I don't recommend it in this instance, I don't think we can establish that this annexation and change in land use will create a substantial burden on the county, I would recommend against objecting to this annexation. And it meets all of the other requirements, it's contiguous, doesn't create an islands, otherwise a lawful annexation.
Thanks, sir, I seek a motion, please. Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion, Commissioner Henderson.
And this is more for information purposes only, who owns that, that particular piece of property?
Uh, the property is owned by an entity called Metro RV LLC, it's a corporate entity, I don't know who the underlying person is.
So it's, it's right beside, I think, excuse me, on Old Atlanta Highway, and it's right beside the RV park that's already in there.
That's correct.
Right there, so, but I thought it was a, um, somewhat of a flood plain, some, 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 there, cause it's a.
Well, if there's a flood plain, they have to work around it, that we're, if flood plain's there, I, I don't see any obvious indication of a flood plain on the, it's on the back side.
Not over by that, not over by that particular park, it's on, you know, where, um, I hate to say this, but you know where the Top Ten building is?
Mm-hmm.
It's on that road, it's on that back road, right there. So it's not over, over by the, the park itself.
Is it crawl from Top Ten?
Over, yep.
Okay, okay, I know, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor? Passes five oh. Um, Mr. Jockstetter, she again. Um, Mr. Jockster, she again.
So the next item is a request for a notice of annexation application from the city of Mansfield. They are, they have received an application to annex roughly, uh, two and a half to three acres of property located on, um, Sewell Road, roughly at the corner of East Railroad Avenue. This is on the west side of the city of Mansfield. There are two lots that are adjacent to one another that are roughly split in half. The front half of the lot, the road frontage is located within the city of Mansfield. The back half of the lot is located in the unincorporated area of the county. The applicant is proposing to annex the property, divide it into two lots of roughly two and a half acres each, to put two homes. Again, they are rezoning the property from the county's A zoning designation to a residential density, a residential zoning in Mansfield that would allow for lots at least as small as two and a half acres. Again, that is a change in the rezoning or a change in the zoning. And again, it probably does not qualify for an objection because there's no, there's no way we could establish a substantial harm to the county by this annexation. And again, it is, um, roughly two and a half acres of two lots that are split in half between the county and the city. And what they did, it's part of a larger parcel of about thirty-eight acres. They're not annexing the larger thirty-eight acres. They're only annexing the small part of the front two lots.
I seek a motion, please. Is there a second? Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
So, um, I, I will listen to you and me, but, so, once we annex it, they, it will be a smaller lot? Because I think the minimum in the unincorporated is two acres.
The minimum, Ms. Applewhite, is ten acres?
For, uh.
In the A zoning. They will be subdividing their parcel, if annexed, into two lots of two point six acres. So it will be smaller lots, but it'll just be two of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussions? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Our next is item number twelve, approval resolution R zero one zero nine two four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll.
Mr. Jockster, show me.
So any, anytime there are local elections, uh, for Newton County officials, the Board of Commissioners is required by resolution to establish the qualifying fees, which as you all know, is the fee you must pay to seek elective office. Those fees are three percent of, for the most part, three percent of the salary. For county officials such as a sheriff, tax commissioner, uh, probate judge, clerk of superior court, the, it is three percent of the state salary. We don't look at the salary we actually pay them. We look at the state minimum salary. For county commissioners, it is three percent of the base salary for a county commissioner. It ignores COLA adjustments, longevity, or things like that. And likewise, for the coroner and the Board of Education, it's three percent of the base salary. And so, as you know, as you, the longer you serve, you get COLA adjustments, you get longevity adjustments. The, the three percent does not include those. The Exhibit A that was a handout to you is the correct Exhibit A. There was a math error on our first one. Uh, this, after you set the qualifying fees, a notice is run in the paper no later than February first. And that will, that's sort of step one toward the 2024 elections. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any, any questions?
When is, I had people asking this question, when is qualifying? Do we know that?
I, as I sit here, I don't know. I think it's in March.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't remember the exact dates, but it's like a three week window within March. I'll get that to you. I'll have it by the next meeting.
And Patrick, before, I just want to make sure that we didn't leave anything off. So the state offices, offices don't supposed to be here?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the state, like state representatives and people like that, they don't pay their qualifying fee locally. They pay, that's handled by the state.
Cool beans. Uh, let me get up, can I, go ahead, Commissioner.
I had, just, just one question. Was the, and I mentioned for qualified fee that you paid, um, chairman, was, is it more, was more the last one you paid, is it gonna be less this one? Because I was kind of looking at it, I was saying.
No, it's more. Um, so we do need a motion to approve.
That's correct. Any motion for the resolution?
Is there a second? It's a motion by Commissioner, um, Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Next is, um, information, information systems. If there's question approval of additional network storage. Uh, Director Michael, how you doing, sir? Welcome tonight.
Doing well. Good evening, Chairman, County Manager, esteemed members of the board. I'm here before you to request additional network storage for the county. Um, we are in desperate need of additional network storage. Um, we are very, very, very low. And if we do run out, we will cease to run county operations. Um, with that being said, I ask that we approve this of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and six cents. Um, and you should have the quote with you as well.
Thank you, sir.
What can I question?
So let me start off by saying thank you for bringing this, uh, to the board because this is much needed. Um, I seek a motion, please. Two motions. Okay, I, we need it, seriously. It's been motion by, um, Commissioner Mason and second by, um, you, Commissioner Cowan? Commissioner Cowan? Yeah, Commissioner Cowan. Uh, any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Welcome aboard. It's my first time meeting you, so thank you so much. I remember when, was it Greg, was it Greg our last question?
He was trying.
He came, I thought we approved it. Because he, because he told, because I was, how I know this, because I was over my space. And he said that once it gets approved at the next meeting, then Commissioner will extend your space. I remember we voted on it. So I was confused on why we're back here.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think that was the same space. Well, this is gonna allow us to function, man.
Recovery plans, uh, cloud computing, things of that nature.
I'm not against it. I just thought we did it previously.
To my knowledge, we, we had not, from talks with staff and.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So is this, is this cloud storage or is this, uh, owned, uh, server storage?
Physical storage on site.
So, I'm sorry?
Physical storage on site.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Item fourteen, Public Works. Mr. Chester, if you would come on down, please. Public Works requesting the Board of Commissioners to approve contract with Exelior Construction LLC for the restoration of Cricket Frog, Frog Trail. I think you got some people that are coming with him tonight. Let me just say, while y'all on y'all way up here, um, man, they are dedicated to their cause. I know we all support the trail system, but you guys are dedicated. Thank you for, for what you do. Yeah, go ahead, Chester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to introduce, um, Dwayne Ford to some of you might not, not know him. He's the, the chairman of the Newton Trails Board. And on my left, uh, to my left here is, um, Lowell Chambers. He's also a member of the Board, uh, Newton Trails. And, and like, uh, the chairman was saying, they've done a great job, especially with the Cricket Frog Trail. Um, just got, if you don't know, um, they received a three hundred thousand dollar grant from Meta.
Yep.
For this project that we're discussing tonight, and that's pretty impressive, so.
Yeah, that's huge, that's huge.
I talk with them almost daily, uh, about the project moving forward, so they're, they're great to work with. Um, tonight, um, well, previously, the board, uh, voted to, um, partner with Newton Trails to, um, renovate the, um, Trestle Valcovee River. And, um, we received bids from the contractors, and we got a low bid of, um, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred dollars to, to, um, restore the bridge and bring it to a, a point where we can, uh, you know, have a deck on it, rails, and use it as a, a multi-use trail. As you know, the board approved, um, spending four hundred thousand dollars, uh, on the project, and Newton Trails is providing the remaining balance. So I'm asking the board, um, if they would approve the contract with, the name of the contractor is Exelior.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? Uh, motion been made by, uh, Commissioner Edwards. It was second by, um, Commissioner Mason, and it was third by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Congratulations, guys.
Y'all hurry. I had to stop at the Trestle yesterday afternoon when I walked, so.
Uh, next is item fifteen, nomination of personnel hearing officer. I think that would be, uh, Patrick. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Henry County, or I'm sorry, the Newton County Employment Personnel Policy has a provision, it is in Chapter ten, Section ten through thirteen through ten nineteen, if you're curious, that allows any employee who is terminated or suffers adverse employment action to seek an appeal. And that appeal goes to a personnel hearing officer. And the code also tells us how we appoint a personnel hearing officer. And in your code, the personnel appointed, a personnel hearing officer is appointed upon the nomination by the county manager and the chairman. The personnel hearing officer must be an attorney licensed to practice law in Georgia, and they are appointed for one-year terms. So unlike some of the other appointments, there's a specific one-year term. Interestingly, the county has not had the need for a personnel hearing officer since at least 2018. There's never been one appointed under this ordinance. I have recommended to the chair and the manager, uh, an attorney by the name of E. Logan Butler. Mr. Butler was the last hearing officer to serve for Newton County. He served for a number of years prior to 2018. Um, he is available and will continue to serve. If the board would like for someone else to appoint, certainly the, the chairman and the manager could consider and make other nominations. But it has to be approved by the board. There is a little bit of a time element here. There is at least one, potentially two employee, employment matters that are ripe for hearing before the personnel hearing officer. We'd like to go ahead and get the officer appointed so those appeals can proceed. And I'd recommend Mr. Butler. He has done the job before. He is familiar with the county's policies and familiar with the role of the county, the county hearings. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Is Mr. Butler affiliated with the law firm?
No, he's not. He has no relationship to us whatsoever.
No, not, not you all. Is he affiliated with a law firm?
It's his own practice. I think it's just his, I think it's just him.
Okay.
Yes, but he is.
Any more courses? I'm gonna let you ask questions before we get to motion. Any more questions on this one?
So you stated that there hasn't been a, because I, this is my fourth year, and it's my first time ever hearing about, that's why I was asking Commissioner Henderson, is he familiar with it? Because I've never heard of this. So, bringing this about, are we ha, I know there's certain, trying to formulate my words to where I'm not taking it to where it should be in executive session. But are there certain instances that are occurring that's requiring us to have this currently now?
There is at least one employee whose employment was terminated, who is seeking an appeal.
Okay. And is this, this is not a, are we paying a, a salary to this individual, or is this invoiced based on hours as an attorney?
No, he will invoice. He will bill his time.
Okay, do we have to know what that amount is?
Uh, the rate, I believe, let me double check, is, I don't want to misspeak and I may not be able to find it. Um, I believe it was two hundred dollars an hour, but I'll confirm for certain to let you know.
That's a good question, though. That is a good question. Um, Commissioner Henderson.
So where, where would this money be coming from?
I think Mr. Cooper may have to help me with that one. I, I don't know enough about where the budget. I presume from your.
It will, it will come probably from our generating operating fund, what we do our personnel expenditures from. But I will speak specifically to Brittany, uh, to get that information to you all.
So as far as the duties, so once a case is submitted to Attorney Bu- Bu- Butler, am I pronouncing it correctly?
Butler.
Butler. Oh, I'm sorry. Bu- Butler. What will be the ending result? Is he gonna be providing something to the commissioners? How is this process go about?
So in, under your code of ordinances, the employment decision, uh, is made at the level of the manager, and it goes to the hearing officer for appeal, and that's the end internally. So what will happen is the employee, the employee asserts his right to appeal, which has been done, and there is then an appeal, the appeal process kicks in. What that appeal process involves is the delivery of the records that, that the, proper, that the employee wishes to be reviewed. And typically, there will be a hearing, and that hearing is, is as formal as the parties want it to be. And at the hearing, the hearing officer will hear evidence, just like a judge. It's a lot less formal. And then the hearing officer will issue a ruling either affirming or reversing the employment decision.
So how is HR involved in this?
HR is essentially the presenter of, it's just like there's two parties. It's HR on one side and the employee on the other side.
So HR would be representing the county. I know they work for the county, but, okay, so my.
That's right. And, and our firm will assist them in presenting the case.
Because my question would be, because, uh, knowing some HR duties, if a individual is requested to be terminated, does HR provide feedback to the individual that wants to terminate that employee, whether they should or should not be terminated based on policies?
I, I can't answer that question with any certainty. I'm not involved in that process, but I would hope they do, yes.
If you can, um, county managers provide information.
All terminations are vetted through HR. So, when you look at this personnel hearing officer, what they're gonna do is irack the situation. They're gonna look at the issues, they're gonna look at the rules associated with it, and they're gonna conduct an analysis. And based on that ana- analysis, they're gonna render a conclusion by way of an executive summary. We then will bring that summary back to this board, maybe in an executive summary format, to give you all insight on the decision that's rendered.
So, uh, maybe I, kind of, my question probably wasn't a little bit clear. I'm thinking about, in my mind, I'm thinking about cost effectiveness. So before it gets to Mr. Butler, if there is a, for example, if you request for somebody to be terminated, and our HR director says, well, based on policy, based on this may be a potential lawsuit, I suggest we don't do it this way. Is that gonna be recorded? Because it could be a middle person before we put Mr. Butler in place where we, it's gonna cost us two fifty an hour. So my question is, where does it lie with HR giving directives with their position as giving advice saying we should not move forward with this termination?
As I stated, they'll render a recommendation to that manager or that leader who is recommending termination.
And this is recorded through HR, correct? Documented?
Correct.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, Harold, is this only this, uh, personnel hearing officer only gonna be in effect when there is an appeal?
As needed.
It's not gonna be every single time there is a termination that takes place. It's only gonna be when there's an appeal process that's needed.
Correct. And typically, these type of circumstances are few and far between.
Thank you.
Because, again, when there's a termination, we're gonna make sure that we vet our terminations to make sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed.
Correct. So we do have a very knowledgeable human resource department, uh, that can, that have the skill level, uh, have the, uh, knowledge to be able to understand whenever there is a termination that takes place, uh, that they are doing it from a legal or a professional process. And so this personnel hearing officer is only gonna be in effect once there is an appeal from the termination that was set in place by the HR department or the county manager's office.
They have a progressive discipline process in, in place. And now mind, sometimes you skip steps based on the egregiousness of the offense.
Right.
Correct, yes.
We're able to find any record of, that we're aware of, was in 2018. So this is not a process that you're gonna see happen a lot. Um, and it really is, it's just a stop, it's just a, kind of a backstop to ensure that the employee has an opportunity to present his or her rights. We're preserving the due process rights of the employees by having an independent hearing officer, not in the side, not involved in the decision to hear the facts. We're preserving the due process rights of the employees by having an independent hearing officer, not in the si- not involved in the decision to hear the facts and evaluate the offense.
Right. And I just wanted to make sure that I provided that level of clarity, uh, because I didn't want anyone to think that this particular personnel hearing officer would be someone that we would be paying two hundred dollars an hour for every single termination, uh, that took place within the county, that this was only relative to whenever there was an appeal process. Now you have an additional individual that comes in with another level of subject matter expertise to be able to provide, uh, some additional information whenever there's an appeal process. I just wanted to provide a level of clarity to ensure that everyone understood that this was only, person was only in place for appeal processes and not for every termination. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanna make, uh, well, it's really not clarity. I stated what I said. So, in reference to, there was no reference that any personnel in Newton County was not doing their job. The reference was to make sure that there was transparency with the residents in regards to the person that's put in place. I don't think any resident thought that we would utilize this individual, this attorney, all the time. That's why I asked the question, what was the process of the HR director in this? And is there recommendation given from the HR director? Our HR director is very knowledgeable. She just received her doctorate, very educational, so I thank you for that.
Um, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Uh, just one quick question. It's kinda what we were talking. I was thinking, uh, is there a re- uh, retain a fee or amount of money in this?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Um, did we get a motion? No, no, we didn't get a motion. Can I get a motion, please?
Hold on. Second.
It was a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Mason. I'm gonna bypass discussion. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Um, guys, I just wanna clear up something before we do the, um, alcohol license. Um, so we said, we, we said that about the ten thousand dollars for the MLK, um, celebration. So, as I'm understanding, if they don't have a five oh one C three, that we can't fund them? I just wanna make, get clarification on that.
Well, let, let me, I, the, the, we, we've had extended and in-depth discussions before about, about giving money to people maybe we shouldn't have or weren't qualified per county guidelines. I just wanna make sure we're covering our bases.
Okay. I got you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, alcohol license, final reading. Item number sixteen, renewals, rather, I'm sorry. Um, Family Dollar Store of Georgia LLC, three two five zero, Highway eighty-one, Covington, Georgia, three hundred sixteen, that's District Two. Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the alcohol license for Family Dollar Stores of Georgia LLC at thirty-two fifty Highway eighty-one, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six.
Thank you. It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Uh, B one three one three, I think that's Limelight Inc., one three one three, Highway eleven. Uh, Social Circle, Georgia, three zero zero two five, District Five. Commissioner Cowan. Can I get a second, please? It's a motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Um, new alcohol license, first reading, Georgia CBS Pharmacy LLC, CBS Store number eight four one eight. Um, Tiffany R. Calhoun, one zero two six seven, Highway thirty-six, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one four. That's in District Five, first reading. Citizen comments. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to make comments. Uh, you may come at this time. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the record, please. Citizen comments. Have three minutes to do so. Please come at this time.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Commissioners. I am, uh, under threat nation news. I live here in Covington, Georgia. Tonight, we done spent over a million dollars tonight. And the people house is still not in order. And I'm talking about, uh, these monitors. I spoke to the commissioner earlier about the monitors, that we can get some brackets and hang them on the wall so the people in the back can see the commissioner and doing their job. Uh, last month, we had the Christmas decoration. I don't know who got the praises for the, you know, we didn't come here to see no Christmas decoration. And we came here to talk to the people, and the meeting went on so long, majority of the people left. By the time they got, by the time it was time for the citizen to speak, you know, the meeting went too long. And then for the county manager, you know, we boast and brag about how you spending the ARPA fund money. Put it out there on the website so the people can see how their money is being spent and where it's going. And another thing, the county manager said, uh, let's not live in the past. That bothers me, uh, county manager, because when you don't keep a check on the politicians, they run amok of the system, okay? So, we all citizens need to keep a check on their government at all times. You got the taxpayer money, and you doing what you wanna do with it, and if it was up to me, I would call on the federal government, state government, to investigate all money coming into Newton County. Because somehow or another, I feel that money's not being spent right. And, uh, a million dollars tonight, taxpayer of Newton County, that what we spent tonight. So, thank you, Chairman. We'll see you in the future.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Citizens comments. You may come at this time. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
New Year is oxi on March twenty-second. Julius Caesar changed it for his own enjoyment. Okay, it's not January, it's not January first. Alfonso Henley, fifty-five, Riverbrook Trail. What is a black? What is a white? These two questions need to be addressed and purged from America as description of people. The Jacobean playwright, Thomas Middleton, in sixteen thirteen, invented the concept of white people. Then, white people went on to invent black people. Today, it's just, they are just terms to separate people in America. The overtaxed ja- taxpayers of this county and America, if we follow the money trail, it's going to lead to one race of people in America, the Jews. The Jews are stealing America. This is my three minutes. I don't care. This is my three minutes. The Jews are taking everything from Amer- there is no such thing. Am I anti-Christian?
Hey, sir, 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 sir. Address the chairman. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Until we separate, until we put back together what God has formed, people, and separate the colors, I mean, we have French people in America, we have Irish people in America, we have Scottish people in America. But all of a sudden, when the Jews got here, they funded both the North and the South, and black and white became a thing in America. Now, the Jews that came here in sixteen thirty-four as twenty-three people now own America. They came here broke, kicked out of Brazil. They've been kicked out of every country on the planet since the tenth century for their usury and their wicked purposes that they, you, they, they just, they, let me get my mind together here. But we need to address the Jews in America. They have come here and separated brother and sister. They have separated everything. They've made, Stan isn't the color of his shirt, and our chairman there isn't the color of our hat. We need to scratch those words. We are people. We are blood. If we close our eyes, we are all just voices of God. That's it. No more, no less. All of us are spirits. All of these things here, this here, this is no more than the wood with some air, the sun, and water. The spirit makes us talk.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? You have three minutes to do so. Citizens comments? You have three minutes to do so. Sir, sir. Three minutes to do so.
Denise Williams, Newton County resident. Um, I have a question for the county manager about the ARPA funds. A lot of the seniors, uh, they have turned in their paperwork. They have, um, did the, uh, contract process, signed their contract. Now, they're saying that they're gonna split the contract three different ways. I'm not understanding how you can get a contract, get an estimate from somebody, and then they split the contract three different ways. And you got all your vendors pulling out because it's so difficult. And they saying that they don't wanna come in and work behind two other different contractors, so their insurance can be sued for saying, well, he did it, or she did it, or they did it. And the, the board also voted to put a, um, a review board in place, so if anybody was denied, that they can come back before the appeal board. So, have that appeal board been put in place? And if so, who are the people on the appeal board? But we really need, commissioners, y'all really need to get involved, because what is gonna happen? It's gonna be a major federal lawsuit down here about how they doing these, these federal, these ARPA funds with the senior home repairs. You cannot, you cannot split a contract three different ways when it's one person named on that contract. So, commissioners, y'all please get involved, because the senior citizens are calling us, and these people out here in the audience, that they going through the same exact thing too. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Frederick, Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two, Covington. Got a few things I wanna put in your hearing. First of all, installation for my pastor. Our new pastor will be Sunday at, uh, two o'clock. Also, they gonna be having the, uh, King Day celebration at that same time. In the past, my, uh, young men have been ushering at the, uh, King's celebration, but I won't be able to do it this time. But we will, that Monday, King's birthday, we still gonna do, try to do some cemetery. I had the opportunity to go down to the slave cemetery on Henderson Mill Road, uh, the other day. And I would like to do some working there, but I don't want a whole lot of kids in there like we did last time. And I think probably what I'll end up doing, getting three or four young men can handle a chainsaw and go in there and just cut all the small stuff down, and we get rid of it, because along with it stay there, it's gonna end up getting this big. You, you know, just like these other trees are. But that's gonna be some, sometime down the line.
Um, I'm gonna have to jump in for one sec. Can you cut this time, please? Um, you said on Henderson Mill, that's not the one that's, that's not the Gaiters Cemetery, right?
Do I know?
That's not the one that's adjacent to Gaiters? So, um, we finding out that that is a, that, that, that may be a historic site. And we kinda gotta be careful on how we get in there and, um, um, disturb stuff, um, because, you wanna help me with this? Patrick?
Well, I don't know the details of the historic designation, but if it is a historic designation, you, you do wanna take a little care. Now, I don't think there's anything wrong with removing overgrown vegetation. I think that's perfectly acceptable. I would be very hesitant to, to move the earth at all. I'd be very hesitant to, you know, change the elevation of the ground anywhere, dig anything up. I would limit it to clearing. I think that's an acceptable.
I'm saying, the only thing I'm saying, last time we were down there, about eight, six, seven years ago, we had trees this big in the graves.
Oh, it's, it's a disaster. I'm telling you, it is.
And this is, this is all I'm saying, that if we, you know, do away with the smaller trees now, then you, you, you know, we, we, we could do that. But if noth- nothing else, uh, I don't have no idea how many people we'll have to volunteer. I'm planning on leaving the, uh, high school at nine thirty, uh, on that Monday. And we'll decide on where we gonna go. Then, I'll be looking the rest of the week. Uh, Now Walker had called me the other day and told me that she had some people that wanted, kids wanted to volunteer, and I told her that, you know, we would go ahead and do it. But I'm thinking about trying to do in the, probably Liberty Cemetery and probably, uh, the one on Oak Hill and probably, uh, Gray's Chapel Cemetery again, you know.
Can you?
I don't know exactly which, how many people we'll have to do that, you know, and stuff.
Well, we, brother, can you, can you give the instruction to the board on kinda, uh, where these cemeteries are kinda, um, located at? Like, I know you doing, the Liberty Cemetery. So, if you can give us the information, so that if some of the board members that, that wanna come, that will be able to come, can you get that kinda information out?
Uh, well, it's, 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 between now and, uh, Friday, I, I can decide on, you know.
So, I tell you what. So, let me, I, let me talk to you after the board meeting, cause I can get Latonya to get the information out in this, in this, and give it a going.
Okay.
Okay. Let, let him finish. Let him finish. Go ahead.
But, but this is something we've been doing for years and, and, uh, you know, I, I, I still wanna, you know, continue to do, do the best I can with it. Another thing, uh, this board, not this board, but the, but the, the, the board had, had, uh, voted, uh, several years ago to, uh, realign Moat Road in front of my church. During the Christmas holidays, we had three, three more wrecks out there. I guess somebody gonna have to get killed before anything get done about it, you know. So, I'm still, you know, bringing, bringing this up, you, you know, to the board. And also, the senior citizens, uh, uh, program, uh, work program, a lot of people, they can complain saying they having a lot of trouble, you know, trying to get this thing done and everything. But I, I, may, may, I, I guess I'm fortunate, because I had three, three things that I asked for. A roof, wrought iron railing, and new windows, and all mine is completed. They completed my windows on yesterday. And, uh, I, I hear that, you know, a lot of people having problems. I have no idea what, what, what's the problem. But when they ask for something, I always try to, you, you know, adhere to it, you know. But other than that, I guess that's it. Uh, uh, like I said, we gonna be planning on leaving about nine thirty at the high school and everything. And Laura Bercham and, uh, Laura, Laura Bercham then usually, uh, while, uh, give me people to help out and everything. Other than that, okay.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Henderson, you had something that you wanted to ask about?
I just had some briefly say, if, if we can, uh, pay people to pick up trash outside the road, then, then surely we could get some of those same individuals to help Mr. Johnson for one day to help clean out some of those cemetery.
I agree with that. Um, commis- I mean, Commissioner comments? Um, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'll be brief. It's, uh, look forward to a productive, uh, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan? Commissioner Cowan? Yes, sir? Don't have anything. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
I have just a couple of brief comments. Um, you know, most time, we don't talk about peoples in Newton County, who have went out and just did the best they abilities to make life just a little bit better. I can remember when Commissioner Santa first came on as a commission, she went to Down and Pace Road. And one of the topics we talked was Down and Watch Pace, and she was, she was a slave. And she, after coming out of slavery, she, she went to it. Um, she built an orphanage. In fact, I thought she took care of people while she was a slave. She built an orphanage on, um, Down and Watch Pace, on Down and Pace. And two years after she had passed, they did a. And two years after she had passed, they did away with everything. They, they gave historical side, they gave a little rock about this big and about that big, and they even gave it to Wash Street School, and for years, they set up in the school. And when it came to my attention, and I think y'all were there that day, I said, I don't wanna forget her, what she done, what she was trying to do for the community, she tried to make it better. And because she tried to make it better, they was determined to forget her. Much like my friend, my daughter, Commissioner Sanders, they tried to forget her, but they couldn't forget Miss Downey Watts Pace, because God wouldn't let us forget her, and to this day, at that little park, there's a plaque about this big and about that big of her remembering all the great things she done, thank you, Mrs. C.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, Mr. C, I am happy and honored that I've completed the ten-week program, uh, NACO Leadership Development, which is Colton Powell's initiative, so I receive another leadership certification, um, from NACO, that ten-week program. Also, there, I will be partnering with Point in Time, uh, an email was also sent to the commissioners. Point in Time, along with the Community Action Now, National Coalition for Homeless, um, and also the Newton County Sheriff's Office on January twenty-second, which will be hosted at the West Side Precinct. And what they will be doing, the National Census, Census provides a vital snapshot of homelessness, uh, counting both sheltered and unsheltered individuals on a single night, that's January twenty-second. So, the, when they came some years ago, I wanna say it was ten years ago, to do the count for the sheltered and the unsheltered, it was combined with Rockdale County, so Newton County did not have their own count. So, this time, Newton County will have an actual count of how many unsheltered, um, residents that we have here in the county, whether they're in the shelter, whether they're in the woods and so forth, which can help us get government funding. So, they're also looking for volunteers, if you are available on January twenty-second at the West Side Precinct, it's from seven PM to six AM in the morning, so put on your boots or whatever, we'll be in the woods, do whatever to make sure that we find and locate our unsheltered, uh, population, all the areas, so the government, the federal government can have a count of what's here in, uh, Newton County. And my last, um, I think that's all I have, yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason?
No comment.
Thank you, sir, um, last thing, com- uh, Mr. Johnson, Dicky Johnson, um, Walker will call you tomorrow to get the information out from, for you, and so we can get it to the commissioners. Guys, nothing else, uh, great meeting, thank you, guys, Happy New Year to all of you. I seek a motion that we adjourn, please, it's a motion by Commissioner Henderson, can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Edwards, all in favor? We stand adjourned, thank you.